Good morning and welcome on this November 10th morning for the Arizona Commerce Authority's Small Business Bootcamp. My name is Faith Ritchie and I'm the Small Business Programs Manager, filling in for your usual host, Robert Theobald. At the start of these programs, we always like to give acknowledgement and thanks to the many community partners who have made this consistent programming possible for over a year and a half. If you are new to the Arizona Small Business Bootcamp, it was designed to help prepare small businesses of less than 20 employees return from the COVID crisis stronger than ever. It is a statewide initiative supported by our many community partners as well as a resource collective and content library. So what are the Resource Collective and Content Library? Well, the Resource Collective is made up of additional tools and guides provided by our statewide community partners to assist you in running your business effectively. The Content Library is the collection of our more than 180 recorded webinar sessions covering many different topics, strategies, and tools to assist your business not only return stronger, but to stay strong. As always, for the most up-to-date COVID mitigation measures and resources, please visit Arizona's website at arizonatogather.org and the AZ Commerce Authority's COVID-19 webpage. Additionally, the ACA has services and resources available to assist the small business community throughout the state. Whether you are looking to start, grow, or scale, there may be additional resources available to you. For information regarding these programs, please visit the Arizona Commerce Authority's webpage. Speaking of looking to start, operate, and grow in Arizona, the ACA also hosts the Small Business Checklist, which is an interactive online guide to help answer all of those commonly requested licensing and permitting questions for local, state, and federal levels. Now for some quick business updates. As many of you know, Small Business Saturday is the Saturday following the Thanksgiving holiday, which believe it or not is right around the corner. And this Small Business Saturday was created to highlight small businesses and the impact of shopping locally. If you are a business that would find value in that purpose, we will be sharing a link in the chat to give you some insight and strategies on how to get registered for that special day. For those of you who may be new to this program as well, earlier in the month, Governor Ducey announced that $3.5 million would be available for programs to support continued economic growth. We will continue to host special sessions just as today to provide all of that up-to-date information about small business support, such as the Maricopa County Small Business Resilience Program, which we will discuss in today's session, but be sharing that link in the chat with you now. And last, but certainly not least, we will continue to promote this, but the Employee Retention Credit is a great opportunity for small businesses to take advantage of if they qualify. So we have done some sessions in the past and encourage you to visit that Content Library to revisit those sessions to see if you can make it work for you. Now, looking at our upcoming sessions and observance of Veterans Day, we will resume next week with some motivating sessions to get you ready for the upcoming holiday season and new year. But talking about the upcoming Veterans Day, we wanted to acknowledge that today is the 246th Marine Corps Birthday. And so November 10, 1775, is the day that all Marines proudly stand up to honor. So happy birthday to the Marine Corps celebrating 246. Now, as we discuss next year in our bootcamp topics, we are also planning for a new year and are looking to identify the best time for continued live learning webinars. So we're going to prompt a poll on your screen now. So we're just going to take a few moments to complete that. Again, I'm wanting your feedback to see as we continue providing live learning via Zoom through the next year. So please just take a moment. And we will end the poll in just a bit. All right, and we'll go ahead and end. Thank you all so much for completing that. We appreciate it and we appreciate your feedback. And now finally, without further ado, I'm happy to introduce Thomas Barr, Vice President of Business Development for Local First Arizona. If you have not interacted with Thomas or his amazing team at the largest coalition of local businesses in North America, we recommend that you do. On top of the resources that he will be sharing today, Local First has a variety of resources and programs accessible to small business owners across the state. So to talk about the Maricopa County Small Business Resilience Program, I will now stop sharing my screen and turn the time over to Thomas. Thank you so much for being with us, Thomas.
Thank you so much, Faith. I'm excited to be here. Excited to share information about this program that we're helping operate right now and hopefully will help get some more dollars out to the community and to our small businesses for all of you that are joining today. So for just a quick point of clarity, you may remember if you're active in the bootcamp sessions and attending that we participated a few weeks ago to share about the technical assistance program that Maricopa County is running. What I'm sharing about today is actually a completely separate. This is a grant program that the county is facilitating that is actual grants, dollars for small businesses. The technical assistance and the support side is completely separate. This is for small businesses within Maricopa County, and I'm going to walk through today what some of the requirements are, what some of the issues we're seeing with some of the businesses that are applying so that you can navigate past those and be fully prepared to apply if you're eligible. And then answer any questions you might have. Our team helped launch this grant about a week ago. It was Monday last week that this opened up. There is a pool of funds that is available, and this will be open through March 31st, 2022, or when those funds are relinquished. So we're encouraging any business that thinks they might be eligible to apply now so that you can get access to the funds early when you most need it. So if you are asking questions in the chat box, I'm probably not going to see them while I'm talking, but I will for sure open up questions at the end so we can walk through those afterwards. You're welcome to submit them, but I'm going to, I'm going to hold to the end for any questions. Just really quickly, if anybody's unfamiliar with Local First Arizona, we've been a local business coalition for 19 years, nearly 19 years. We represent over 3,200 members across the state, and we do a ton of work providing assistance to small businesses in a variety of ways. So the way that we're actually helping with this grant program right now is we're essentially just helping businesses apply. The Arizona Community Foundation is the arm that is reviewing applications and submitting their reviews to the county. And then the county is actually the ones that are approving, denying, and/or asking for more information from applicants. So while we are hosting everything and helping you apply, getting answers to your questions, we're not the ones making the decisions, and we're actually not the ones that have set the parameters for the grant. The county, the Maricopa County has done all of that, and they're the ones that are really running this thing. But we're here to help you. We work with small businesses for 19 years. We have a full team of people that will be available, whether you need to email us or call us or even set up time to talk to us in person. We're happy to do any of that. And we're excited to get this information out to you today. So first of all, if you don't have the link yet and you'd like to follow along online, you're welcome to go to localfirstaz.com/maricopagrants. There's a ton of information on that page. We have everything from the details of the qualifications for the grants, frequently asked questions that we're getting from businesses that are applying. And there's also a link to an acceptable documentation page that will open up a new PDF that will explain all of the criteria that you're going to need and what will be accepted by the county when they review your application when you're going to put it in. So I highly encourage that before you apply, you read through all those documents, you go through all those pages, you make sure you fully understand the eligibility requirements, the necessary documentation that you're going to need to have when you apply. It'll make the application process a whole lot easier for you, and you'll be able to know whether or not you're eligible before you go through the application. We're seeing some businesses that are applying that, that don't meet the qualifications, and unfortunately, there's just no wiggle room. However, however much funding you may need right now, the eligibility requirements that they've set are, they are strict. And so you must meet them in order to qualify. You can still apply, but if you don't meet them, you will be, you'll be denied. So we really recommend you take time to read through those and just make sure that you understand them before you apply. So where are these funds coming from? A portion of the Maricopa County's Federal American Rescue Plan Act funding has been allocated to aid small businesses and nonprofits financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So this is directly from the American Rescue Plan, federal funding that has come to the county, and they've decided to create with a portion of those funds, a grant program for small businesses. So if you're wondering where these are coming, this is exactly where they're coming from, that federal funding that the county has access to. So to just kind of walk you through some of the baseline requirements for the grant program that you should know about, there's kind of just a few things that you should know as, as kind of baselines as you are looking into applying. First of all, the funds are grants of up to $25,000. These are for small businesses that can demonstrate declines in revenue of at, of at least 25% over a specific time period. So you must show that you had a 25% revenue decrease for your business from July 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020 compared to those same months in 2019. Now, you might remember that last year, the county also facilitated grant program that were, was over a different period of time. And so they've set a new period of time for this grant program to try to capture any businesses that may have seen deficits during these months compared to the months that they facilitated the grant for last year. So that's why the dates are like this now. Like I said before, applications opened on November 1st, they will run through March 31st, and they'll be distributed on a rolling basis. So you can expect after you've submitted a full application, you will hear back after five business days whether or not you were confirmed for funding and how much denied for funding and why. Or if there's issues with your application, your application will open back up, and you'll be able to go in and edit any changes. Some things that I recommend thinking about and double checking on before you even go into the application, there's things we're seeing like your tax identification number directly matching the name of your business that you are applying with. So you want to go in, you want to make sure that your files are correct, that the business name that you're putting on your application is exactly matching what's registered. These are the types of things that are causing businesses to have to go back in and create edits, and then it kind of makes the process longer for you. And so we really recommend double check, go into your files, don't go into your accounts, and just make sure that everything is correct. So like I mentioned before, there's some, a few specific areas as far as who is eligible for these grants. First of all, you must be a business that is based in Maricopa County. You've had some questions from businesses that are in other counties of the state. And while those counties may potentially operate their own grant programs, we don't know. This is very specific to businesses in Maricopa County. So if you are not in the county, you cannot apply. That is the first eligibility requirement. The second is that you can be a for-profit or a nonprofit 501(c)(3) small and micro business. So unfortunately, if you are anything other than a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, 501(c)(6) or whatever it is, that does not match the requirements for this grant program. You must be a 501(c)(3) or a for-profit small business. You can be a sole proprietorship out, operated out of your home. You do not need to have a brick and border to be able to apply for this program. Or you can be a mobile vendor. You could be a food truck. You could be a caterer, something like that. The, the program is accepting all different types of incorporations such as LLCs, sole proprietorships, et cetera. There's different, there's going to be a different way to apply that I'll go over in a minute, depending on how you're registered. But all of, all of those entities are eligible. Other requirements that are kind of the baseline requirements, you must have employed 50 or fewer full-time employees as of March 1st, 2020. You must not have generated more than $5 million in revenue, which is gross sales between January 1st, 2019, essentially for the entire year of 2019. And then the last, which is where the work comes in for your application, you must show that you had a 25% decrease in revenue over the calendar year of 2019 to 2020, those months that I showed, July 1st through December 31st, 2020 compared to 2019. There's going to be documentation that you need to provide to show this, and there's also a worksheet that you will need to fill out, that you will need to document your sales for as well. And so all that's going to be provided on our website. You're able to click on those links that I mentioned before and get access to those things. And it's, it's spelled out how you can fill them out and how you submit them on the application. But these are the baseline eligibility requirements. There's some other things coming up, just to name. Let's say you had a business that was, you know, incorporated outside of Arizona. Let's say you had a business in California and you moved it to Arizona. We're looking at, when you, when you put in the start date of your business, we want the date that you started it in Arizona. There's things like that that are nuances that we're making sure businesses know about. For your W-9 that you're going to want to have ready, if you've got one in 2019, we want you to have one in 2021. We want you to have the most up-to-date one. So make sure you're taking the time, just prep those documents, be ready to apply so that you don't have to go back to drafts and then re-edit everything that is in the application when it's time to submit it. So a question that we're getting is that will all qualified applicants receive a $25,000 grant? No, eligible small businesses that are approved for funding will be eligible for up to $25,000. It's going to be calculated based on the actual loss that was determined by the revenue decline that you show for the months that are submitted. So not everyone is just getting $25,000 for applying. Some people may, if you can show a heightened amount of revenue decrease, some people may get less depending on the revenue losses that you show. So please don't go in thinking that just because you apply, you're getting $25,000. It is up to $25,000 based on the revenue declines that you actually show on your application. What is the application review and decision-making process? So you're going to go, and I'm going to show you the links, I'm going to show you what the pages look like here in a moment. You're going to go in and you're going to apply, you're going to create an account. Once you hit submit on that application, you will hear a status update on your application within five business days. So what does that mean? That means if you're applying today, which is a Wednesday, you can expect to hear back about your application by end of day a week later. So next Wednesday, end of day is when you would get a status update. That's going to be a status update that says you're approved for your funding. You were denied for your funding, or hey, we did not receive all the correct information or there's a discrepancy with your application. You need to go back into your application, resubmit edits, and then we can have you resubmit it so that it can actually be reviewed. There are cases that are happening where a business will hit submit on their application and then reach out to us and say, actually, I made a mistake. I need to correct this. You cannot correct your application or edit it after you've hit submit. You have to wait for it to be reviewed for them to say, hey, there's a discrepancy, and then for it to be sent back. And so if you're thinking you want to get it done really fast without checking your application, highly recommend not doing that. Please double-check, triple-check what you're putting on there because if you get sent back, you get back into the queue. You're going to have to resubmit it again, and then you're going to have to wait another five business days to get a status update. So we highly encourage work hard on getting that information as correct as possible and submitting it as fully as you can and as correct as you can so that you can just be reviewed fully and not have to be sent back in the draft to edit your application. One other thing that we're showing, for example, oh, and, and as well, if you're needing to ask any questions while you are creating your application or submitting it at all, you can reach out to our team at Local First Arizona, maricopagrants@localfirstaz.com or by phone Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 at (602) 777-7636. We are available to help coach you through and walk you through how to apply. We're available to answer any questions you have about your eligibility, and we're available to just make sure that you have all the questions answered if you're having any issues. Some of the things that we're seeing as businesses apply is that, and I'll go over this on, on one of the following slides, you're going to need to show documentation of all of your gross revenue and sales that have come through in 2019 and 2020 by month. And so there's different ways that you'll be able to do this, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But let's say that you are showing that through reports through your POS system. Let's say you use Square. Those all might be exported in separate PDFs per month. But you're only going to be able to apply a certain file size. You upload a certain file size onto the application. And so what you're going to have to do is you're, you're actually going to have to go on and merge all of those files into one PDF document so that it's easy for you to just upload, and you can, you can get everything in there in one file. There are resources on this on the internet. If you just Google PDF compression or PDF file merge, there's lots of different tools, free tools on the internet that you can use to merge all those files together. That's one of the things we're seeing businesses work within. The other thing is there's going to be a worksheet that you have to fill out that also documents your gross sales and revenue, excuse me, for each of those months. This is a templated worksheet that is on the Acceptable Documentation button on our website. When you work in that sheet, while they are, you need to show a 25% decrease in revenue in July to December 2020 compared to same months in 2019. You actually have to enter your revenue for every single month for the year. So while you may think, hey, they're only judging me or they're, they're only looking at my revenue for July to December, do not leave January through June blank. It's going to get sent back. You've got to fill out revenue for every single month so that they can verify all of your information. So that's one of the things that we're seeing some businesses do as well. So to just kind of go over the process really quickly, I just wanted to show everybody, you know, when you go to our website, localfirstaz.com/maricopa-grants, you're going to see a button that says apply, and you're going to be taken to this page. Some of you may recall, if you applied for a grant last year through Maricopa County, that you had a login already created for this page. That was because you probably already submitted for a grant in the past. If you have a login, you can use that same login. If you have not applied for a grant before, you need to click on Create New Account and create a new account to access everything on their portal. There, like I mentioned before, the Arizona Community Foundation is hosting the actual portal where you submit your application, and Local First is helping you with any questions you have in applying. So if you have your own login, you can use that if you need to create a new account, create a new account. If you have more than one business, you're going to have to apply for multiple businesses and multiple different accounts. So you need different emails, you need different information for each business that you are applying for. You need to do those separately if they are separate LLCs or sole proprietorships or whatever they are. So make sure that you're creating different accounts for each application that you have. After you have logged on or created your account, you are going to be taken to an eligibility quiz questionnaire. I don't have a screenshot of it right now, but one of the main issues that we're getting is that there's some confusion from businesses on how to answer the questions. The questions are asking the very basic things that I went over before. Are you based in Maricopa County? Or did you have less than 50 employees as of this state? Did you generate less than $50 million in revenue? And the way they're written is kind of causing people to think, well, do I answer yes or do I answer no? I want to be very clear. The way that they're written is that you must say yes to all of those questions to answer the application. If you say no, your quiz will deny you from accessing the application, and you cannot edit it. What you'll need to do is reach out to us, and then we will have to go into the backend, and we will have to reset your quiz so that you can resubmit it. To save you time, you need to answer yes to all those questions so that you don't get denied from accessing the application, and you can go straight through and access all the things that you need to upload. So it's really important when you get to that quiz, don't get confused by the questions. Just know that if you do meet those requirements, you actually have to answer yes. You are not answering no to access the application. And lastly, here's kind of the guts of the importance of the documents that you're going to have to have ready in order for you to appropriately apply for the grant. I want to go through these one by one. These are all listed on our Acceptable Documentation Document PDF that you can download from our website. And I want to go through them one by one. There's more information on that document, but I want to be able to go through them really quickly. First is a schedule of monthly gross revenues beginning July 2019 to December 2020. You'll remember just a minute ago, I said you've got to show revenue for every single month, even though they're only looking at July through December. So there is a worksheet linked to that PDF that will automatically download that you can fill out. Now, if you do not have Microsoft Excel or you're operating through a system that blocks those types of downloads, it's going to give you an error message. Unfortunately, there's not a true workaround for this, but if you receive an error message that you can't access the documents, please just send us an email. We will reply usually within 30 minutes and we'll send you the documents directly. This is the easiest way for us to get them to you. So if you need those documents, please, please, please just email us. We'll get them to you right away. It's fastest by email. You can call us, but we're still going to need to get your emails so that we can email you those documents. So please email us. There's also going to be an example template of how to fill out those documents. Kind of works the same way. If you can't access it, just email us and we will send them both to you. So that's the first thing you're going to need to fill out on your own. You're going to need to fill those out manually to show your revenues for that. Second is you're going to need to show proof of the totals that you venture, entered on that worksheet. So the second thing is actual documentation of your 2019 or 2020 monthly totals. This could be your QuickBooks. This could be your POS system. This could be a variety of ways that you actually track and manage your financials for your business. Everyone does it a little differently. And so there's examples on our Acceptable Documentation PDF that you can download showing the different ways that you can submit this information to verify it. The third is that you're going to need a screenshot of your business registration on the Arizona Corporation Commission website for whether you have a corporation or an LLC. Now, this needs to show that your business incorporation date was before January 1st, 2020 in Arizona. If it does not show that or show something later or show, does not show active and in good standing, that is not going to meet the eligibility requirements for this application. You need to show active, good standing, and incorporated before January 1st, 2020. Now, some of you may be thinking, I'm a sole proprietor. I don't have this. If you are a sole proprietor, you do not need this. And so you do not need to attach a screenshot on your W-9 rather than an EIN number. You're going to enter all zeros because you do not have one. And so if you have any questions about this, I know it might be a little complicated. You can reach out to our team, we can walk you through it. But again, if you're a corporation or LLC, you need to include that screenshot. If you're a sole proprietor, you do not. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to our team. Lastly, you're going to need your most recent IRS form, W-9. And for sole proprietors, no employees, you'll need your social security number on there. And one of the things that we run into all the time is that this is not signed and dated when you've submitted it, and it'll get kicked back. So if you have everything else correct and everything is perfect, ready to go, you submitted W-9 that is not signed, not dated, they will not accept it. You're going to get sent back to draft. You're going to have to edit your application. So make sure that W-9 is up to date for 2021. Make sure it's signed. Make sure it's dated when you go to upload it. And last but not least, if you are a nonprofit 501(c)(3), you must also upload an IRS tax exemption determination letter. That is required for the grant if you are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Last but not least, what is not listed on this page but is an option for you on the grant is there's an item six for additional documentation. Let's say you had an issue uploading everything that you needed on one of the sections of the grant. There's an extra section with an extra upload button that if you had an extra file or something that just didn't- Uh, there's an extra section with an extra upload button that if you had an extra file or something that just didn't fit. Um, you can upload it to that final section to make sure that it gets through to the review team. Um, so just know that you'll have an extra option at the bottom to do that. It's not required. So if you got everything in through one through five, you're good to go. Um, but you have that extra section in case you you need access to that. Once again, here's the application link, localfirstaz.com slash Maricopa dash grants. We'll make sure to be sharing this out. We'll make sure. Um, to add it in the chat and that all these slides will be available afterwards. Or you can just go to localfirstaz.com if you're having issues, access that and there's a button right on that page on the header that leads you. To the application page um for you to access everything. Again, if you have any questions while you are applying, the local first team is available. We have this email here, Maricopa Grants at localfirstaz.com or our phone number here. If you need to reach us to talk things through, these are also also both posted on our webpage for the Maricopa Grants. Um, and so if you have trouble um typing this out, you can just copy and paste that or just um dial it in when you're ready to go and apply for the grant. So I'm happy to answer any questions today. I see a flood of questions in the chat and the Q and A. Um, so I'll just go ahead and kinda pop it up and um see what's coming on in here and answer things live if that works for you, Faith. Is that cool?
That totally works, Thomas. I think a big chunk of those questions that you'll see in the Q and A relates to eligibility. Um, a lot of business wanting to clarify when they open their business and if they're eligible for this program. So if you wanna reemphasize that. Um, I know that was one of the big asks in our Q and A currently.
Sounds good. I'll go through these one by one, and if anybody has any additional questions at the end. Um, please keep keep sending them through. So first one is um someone applied for grant in twenty twenty. Are they eligible for this grant? Yes, um, receiving grants in the past does not make you ineligible for this one. However, if you did receive a grant, that is income. That you must report for last year. Um, note that a loan is not income. So if you received a PPP loan, that's not gonna be added on. To your revenue for twenty twenty that you're entering in, but if you received a grant, it is. Um, so just note that when you're filling out your information. Do these programs help with my real estate business to build affordable housing? Um, the grants um are for revenue losses. Um, the use of the grants is not um identified in the application. So it doesn't have to go to um specifically for, you know, if you spent money on PPE equipment. Um, it's it's not necessary that it goes to that. It's for revenue losses. So I can't exactly say um what you would use this for if you wanna use it for your real estate business to build affordable housing. Um, but that is not um a parameter of the grant um growth. Um, it's it's on revenue um declines. Are there funding specifically for businesses that are in um the business of reducing COVID nineteen testing and sanitizing? Um, this grant is not focused on that. Again, this is focused on revenue declines. So if you are in that business and can show a twenty five percent decrease in revenue loss, you can apply. Um, but it has nothing to do with what you do as a business. If a business started in twenty twenty, can they apply? If they started on January first twenty twenty, they can't. If they started after that, they are ineligible. If you were a startup business, will you be eligible for funding? If you were a startup that was incorporated before January first twenty twenty, that's one eligibility requirement that you must meet. Um, whether that's an LLC or an S corporation or whatnot, you need to um show that you were in business before that date. All right, a business opened in quarter four twenty nineteen. Can the revenue decline be for the same period of twenty twenty versus the entire period of July through December? Um, so being that you're incorporated at that time, that's great. Um, but you're gonna need to show um. Your revenue for each month for that year. So let's say you started in November twenty nineteen. You need to show your revenue for. January through December of twenty nineteen still, even though you started in November twenty nineteen. And if you show a twenty five percent loss in revenue in twenty twenty compared to those two months you were open. Then um that's one of the eligibility requirements. Reach out to us if you have any other questions about that. I know that's a little complicated. Um, but but if you're incorporated before twenty twenty, you can apply. If you began uh generating revenue in December twenty nineteen and has no data for July through November. Um, can we compare that to twenty twenty for comparing all of the months? Um, again, you need just need to show every single month, um whether that's zero or whether that's twenty thousand dollars in revenue. Um, on the worksheet that's provided. Um, you need to make it clear that you weren't in business um until a specific date and you'll need to show that revenue. So. Essentially, if you if you started your business in December twenty nineteen. You're gonna need to show you had a twenty five percent loss in revenue of December twenty nineteen compared to July through December twenty twenty. It might be hard to do. Um, but really depends on, you know, where are you operating in business? I don't know. It's gonna be your um specific scenario. Um, okay, so in a previous application through a Gilbert program, there's an installment amount and balance on a profile, but the grant was awarded in early twenty twenty one. Um, that's gonna be specific to Gilbert. Um, the grant that we're operating is completely separate. The Gilbert funds are separate from Maricopa County funds. If you have questions, I recommend reaching out to our team. So that we can um try to navigate you through that or get you access to somebody from the town that can answer that question. Um, we don't represent the town of Gilbert for their specific grant program that they may have ran in the past. Um, and so if we need to connect you to somebody, please reach out to us so we can help you. If a business is ready to launch in March twenty twenty and the pandemic, the pandemic put a hold on that. Um, and they're now ready to launch, had no income in twenty nineteen, but still expenses in twenty twenty. If you weren't incorporated by January first twenty twenty, you are not eligible. Um, that is a very, very specific. Um, very, very specific eligibility requirement. So if you don't meet that, you are ineligible for this grant. Um, somebody is having an issue with Chrome. Um, if you're having issues accessing anything on the website, please email our team. Uh, Maricopa Grants at localfirstaz.com so we can help you. For qualifying, if a business launched in twenty eighteen but was legally formed in September twenty nineteen, still possible to qualify? Yes, because you were um in operations um and incorporated hopefully before January first twenty twenty. So if you launched in twenty eighteen as an S corp and then file as, let's say, an LLC in September twenty nineteen. We wanna know all of that, so make sure that you're um still attaching your Arizona Corporation Commission. Um, screenshot if you're filed that LLC in September. Excuse me, but um in the additional documentation section of the application, make sure you're submitting information that says. You were an S corp up until that time. This is, I'm just guessing your scenario, but this is what you would do if that was the scenario. Um, somebody's having issue with the Google Drive. Um, okay, so if you're having an issue, access the documents like I mentioned before. Just uh email us and we will email them right to you. Um, that is the fastest way we can get them to you. Somebody purchased a business in June of twenty twenty. Can you use the sales of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty timeline to apply? Um, no, this is um, this is gonna be um depending on the situation. So why don't you send us an email? And uh and we'll need to look into your into your specific scenario in order to to make a determination on that. Um, I wouldn't be able to answer that based off the information provided, so please send us an email so we can look into it. Does it have to be a current date on the W nine or can it be the one we've been using all year? Please use the W nine from twenty twenty one. That is the one you will need to submit. See a lot about Maricopa County. What about Pima? Pima has not announced a grant program for small businesses that we are aware of. Um, if they decide to do so, we will definitely be spreading the word. I'm sure the Arizona Commerce Authority will as well. This is uh very specific to Maricopa County. Is there a formula that can be used if the business opened in the last quarter of twenty nineteen? Not sure I understand the question, but you need to complete the worksheet um fully. Um, that we have provided. Um, you need to submit all of the information that is required on that, even if you opened in the last quarter of twenty nineteen. Is revenue determined on cash or accrual basis? Um. Let's uh have you email us your uh what you're looking at. Um, we've had a few different types of scenarios with that, so why don't you email us? Your question uh for that so that we can make sure that we're looking at the right data that you're looking at. Can the application be saved or do you have to complete the application once sitting? You can save your information. Um, and it will be saved as a draft. Um, so if you go in and start working on it, you can save it and then you can return later before you hit submit. I use Square for my financials. I do not have Microsoft software. I only use an iPad. Will I be able to submit the application using Square reports? Can I see local? All of my documents. Okay, so you're talking about two different things. You are gonna have to upload your Square reports, yes. But you are also going to have to um open up some type of spreadsheet to complete the spreadsheet that's needed to submit. That is the template. So if you don't have Microsoft, there's some free software out there that you can use to edit an Excel type document. Um, forgetting the name of it right now, but if you Google free Excel or something like that, there's something you can download to use. Or you can um, you can use Google. Um, uh, there's free sheets on Google that you can utilize. Um, this is what we'd recommend. If you have any issues filling those out, um just let us know so that we can try to look into them and and help you get it. But yes, you you have to submit the template in addition to your square documents. If there are consolidated entities, is revenue measured on consolidated basis or entity by entity? If they are registered separately. Uh, you can apply for each. Um, if they are one establishment, you would apply for one application. Um, so we're gonna need to look into your situation. So why don't you send us an email so we can see what's going on and how we can help you. How much has the revenue? Uh, does the revenue need to decline to be eligible? Twenty five percent July first through December thirty first twenty twenty compared to the same months in twenty nineteen?
Excellent. Thank you so much, Thomas. I I wish I would have timed that. To get through all of those questions. Um, that being said, if you haven't gotten your question answered, you haven't asked it yet. So go ahead and put that in the Q and A. Obviously, you can all tell that Thomas is well versed in this program and happy to assist. Um, that being said as well, he has also mentioned that Maricopa Grants at localfirstaz.com address. And phone number if you are needing additional support or information during that application process, you can always reach out to those contacts. And those have been shared in the chat for you as well. Um, again, let me reshare that information in the chat as I see a question in the Q and A about it. And so as you're completing that information or for additional um specific questions in regards to your business and application, you can always. Use those information, phone number or email address. All right. Well, I don't see any additional questions. Oh, soon as you say it.
All right, one more. Is this only based on revenue loss or have you taken into account the cost increases? Um, it's not based on cost increases. It's only based on revenue loss. Um, so unfortunately, if you just um had additional. Um, uh, costs in twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen, that's not something that this grant is based on.
Excellent. Um, I do see one question in the chat and as we're in.
Yeah. I can, I can read it. Yeah, if I only made two sales in twenty twenty just before the pandemic and had to relocate to Maricopa County in twenty twenty one to start up, am I eligible? Well, first of all, we need to um determine if you were in business in twenty nineteen. Um, let's assume you were. And you're incorporated before January first twenty twenty. Um, essentially, y- you need to show that you had twenty five percent decrease in revenue. Um, if you were in Arizona that whole time, um, we're gonna need to show your Arizona Corporation Commission uh screenshot that you're incorporated. Um, and if you're in Maricopa County, um, then you'll be eligible right now, active and in good standing. Um, you will need to um just submit all the required information in um to determine eligibility. So it sounds like it. Um, if you have any nuanced questions or additional questions, though, please let us know. Um, I had another question. If you receive grant income in one of the months, could that potentially eliminate you from eligibility? It depends. Um, grant income has to be reported as income. Um, and so if you received a grant for, let's say, ten thousand dollars and that um show gets you to show that you had a twenty percent loss in revenue instead of twenty five percent. You're not gonna be eligible for the grant. Uh, you need to show twenty five percent loss in revenue and you have to show any grant income as income. Next question is if I was a sole proprietor in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, but I now have an LLC, will my W nine be my SS or my EIN? Please put your EIN on your W nine. Make sure it's a twenty twenty one W nine signed and dated. Please upload your Arizona Corporation Commission active and good standing status LLC. But also in the additional documentation section of the grant application, submit additional information showing that you were a sole proprietor. Before January first twenty twenty one so that they can see um that you transitioned the business to an LLC at this time. The loss of sales is on your revenue. For the last question there.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Thomas. And thank you for taking the time out today to really walk through this information. Um, as Thomas mentioned in his conversation and presentation, this grant just opened. Um, so we know that there are a lot of questions here and we appreciate your time to answering all those questions. Um, in today's session. As a reminder, this session is being recorded and the recording and presentation. Shared by Thomas will be shared on the Arizona Commerce Authority's website uh for the Small Business Bootcamp. So if you wanna re-watch or see what those questions were again and answers, you can revisit. That recording and information on our website. So thank you again, Thomas, for answering all those tough questions. I know you will be receiving a lot more. Again, that contact information, email address and phone number is available for you in the chat. So thanks again. We hope you all have a great day and enjoy the rest of your week.
Thanks, everyone.